Call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge, please.
I proudly salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it looks like we're going to start off with, it says, a presentation by Stephanie Bork on our hazard mitigation plan.
So the presentation was two weeks ago.
Okay.
I'm here to help you all close out the final public comment. So when I was here at your meeting two weeks ago, presented the final draft of your local hazard mitigation plan update that had been, you know, approved by your local planning team and was ready to present. Following that meeting, the plan was made available, both hard copy here at the town office and then online for review and public comment with instructions to send any input my way so that I could assemble it and present it tonight. I did not receive anything during the public comment period from any members of the public. I did receive an email from Joe on behalf of Glenn with some of your input.
Okay.
So that's what I got.
Good.
So I'm here to kind of answer any final questions or, you know, address any final concerns anybody might have on the final draft.
I know we're a little short on part, go ahead.
I was gonna say, just so I understand the process, and at this point, the board just needs to vote to move the project forward to go to the state?
Yes, if there, I wanted to see if there was any further commentary on the draft. If there isn't, then we can talk about next steps. But I didn't want to cut you off from having a conversation about any final comments.
Sam, anything?
Nothing on my part.
Right?
I have nothing.
No, just would like to say, you guys did an excellent job. It's pretty comprehensive. All looked very doable that was sitting in there, so.
Yes.
Thank you for the job.
Thank you, and I think that, you know, Bob Richards participated in one of the workshops where we were looking at evaluating the mitigation actions, and he had a very similar comment. He felt a lot of what that group decided on for actions to implement seemed very reasonable and doable, so I'm glad you felt the same.
Good.
Yeah, so in terms of the couple of editorial comments that you provided, I just wanted to kind of, the first one, obviously, I can change the name of the road, correct the name of the road, but you had another request about adding just a small statement about the town needing upgrades to the electrical distribution system, including an upgraded substation. So I can absolutely put something in the plan, but I wanted to get a sense from you, do you want the statement to be that generic? Or would you like a little bit more specificity? This is not, I'm not a subject matter expert in this.
What I was looking for, it had to do with, Green Mountain Power is going to move and put the substation up on Airport Road.
Okay.
And they're in the process and the paperwork and everything, but I, seeing how we were talking about electrical power and everything, and five years after the plan goes into effect, you start showing that you followed the plan.
Right.
I wanted it down there because it's some, it would say, this is what we want to do five years from now, we're going to say, this is what was done. And the substation was moved and went on Airport Road. That was the only reason I said it would be nice if we plugged something into it, like in the process of putting in a substation for some resiliency to our backup electrical power here.
Okay, sure, so is there more than one substation in town? Because there's a substation noted in the flood profile. Is it that substation?
That one they're closing and.
And moving.
And moving because it's in a flood plain.
I can, I can work with that.
Yep.
Yes, okay. Okay, and then the last, your last comment, the Public Works Foreman had been invited to participate, but I think something must have come up because he ultimately was unable, so I don't.
Okay.
He was never present at a meeting that we held. That's not to say that he wasn't consulted outside of the meetings or worked with Jim to answer questions or provide feedback, but he just wasn't at a meeting to note.
And the reason I want, I mentioned that is because lots of times you'll use this plan five years from now, I'd want them to invite the Public Works Road Foreman, because that's a lot of the equipment and stuff.
I think you'll find in the appendix, Appendix C, where we outline the engagement, and especially the workshop where we were evaluating actions, he had been invited to it. That's the one I'm talking about, where he was invited but ultimately wasn't able to attend.
Okay.
So Appendix C does note that.
Good.
Okay, so if there isn't any further discussion on the draft, I can make those revisions as we just discussed.
Minor revisions.
Yeah, absolutely minor. So with that, what I'd like for the board to consider is making a motion to authorize me to make these changes and then submit the plan on behalf of the town for approval pending adoption.
Would you like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion if we do so.
I will second that motion.
And the motion is authorize.
To authorize, to approve the plan and authorize Stephanie to move the plan forward to adoption.
For approval pending adoption.
Yeah.
Move the plan to approval pending. Thank you.
So you're welcome. In the, in the process to get this plan finally approved, we have this interim step where it goes to the state of Vermont. Vermont Emergency Management gets to review the plan. Remember the review tool I provided in the packet last time? They'll review your plan against that rubric and provide us with feedback as to whether they think the plan satisfies all the requirements, or if there's things they'd like to see changed in order to, in order for them to ultimately approve it. So once we get that back, I'll be in touch with the planning team, let them know what we've got to do, and we'll be circling back with you folks at that time. And then, once we get that approval pending adoption, then the plan will be ready for you to adopt. And at that point, there'll be a form that you sign, and then we include that as Appendix A in the plan, and off it goes for final approval.
Good.
So it'll be a little bit before we get to that stage, but we'll, I'll make sure that it goes in this week.
Good.
Okay?
If there's no other clarification, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous? Thank you very much for spending all the time and hard work on it. Okay, we're going to move on to appropriation policy discussion, which I feel a lot of people that came here for that discussion. Joe, do you want to tee that up a little bit for us, a little bit?
Yes, sir, so the board back in, maybe 2020, during when we were going through COVID, the board revisited this policy, thinking that it might be a better idea to, at that time, to avoid having people kind of get together and get signatures because of, because of the virus. That, that policy's, oh, 2021 is when we implemented that. That policy's been in place until recently, when the board had thought maybe it would be a better idea to go back to requiring our social services to getting signatures to be on the petition. And that's where we are today. In your hand is the, the original policy with a few updates, but it's pretty much the same thing that requires our social services to get that, those signatures.
And that was discussed at our last meeting, and we had, suggested by Chad, who isn't here yet, but that it would be nice, before you make a decision on change, to see what, invite you folks in and see what your feelings or comments of what that, what that does or causes for you if we went back to signatures. So with that, I think we're open for anyone who wants to give us some input, we'd be happy to have it.
I like doing it the current way. In fact, when, I was there when you changed the policy during COVID, and one of the reasons was because it was onerous for some of us, especially those located in Rutland, to have people come to Fairhaven to gather 200 signatures, because many of our social service organizations serve a broader community in Rutland County. I'm here with the Castleton Community Center, but I've collected signatures with council on aging and for Fairhaven Concerned House, Slate Valley Cares in the past. And it's difficult to get 200 signatures without going to the dump on Saturday mornings. So I really like that we don't have to collect signatures every year. However, if we do increase our ask to the community, we're more than happy to get, to collect those signatures and let people know the situations we're facing. Social service agencies are under the gun, I'll just say it's under the gun, looking for support any way we possibly can get it, and this really helps with the process. It's, it's hard to find people who'll go out and gather signature.
Other come?
My name's Gina Grove, I'm from the VNA hospice of the Southwest Region. So we've got to expand a little bit on what you had shared and commented. So I'm the development manager at our philanthropy department. Our department is responsible for all of our town funding requests. All agencies are a little different. We are located in Rutland City. We request town funding from 48 towns last year. Now that might sound greedy to some. It is, under the gun is putting it mildly. We are in dire straits of support. And when we request town funding, I think everyone is requesting it, needs it. Our agency, last year, our agency was approved for about $290,000 in town appropriations overall. We provided $2 million in charitable care last year. Those are services that we are required to provide by the state sometimes, actually all times, because we are a care for state, so we have to provide care if the patient is underinsured or uninsured. We do not get reimbursed by anybody, we have to find that money ourselves. That number was one point, a little over 1.7 million 2023, that number was a little over 1.5 million 2022. So when funding is getting cut from multiple areas, including reduced reimbursement rates, how we are paid, it's critical to our agency and I'm sure everyone that does apply. So would it be lovely if I never had to collect petition signatures again? Absolutely. However, I understand the need to see from the public's point of view and the board's point of view, who are buying, have some skin in the game, so to speak. So I would also agree that anytime there's an increase in request, I also would say, you know, I think some town policies that I'll reference, Rutland Town, for example, if a town increases their request 10% or less year over year, they can increase it by that amount without having to get petition signatures. I also can see that, you know, towns like Castleton were having, you know, they didn't get any letters of request. Actually, our, our agency, I think, was one of the few who was still on the ballot this year. So there needs to be, you know, you can't just say, okay, it's done once, and then we can't come back and show you and report back to the community why your need is there and why, why it's important. I like that Brandon, they're kind of on a, every five years, whether you have renewed your request or not, every five, or increased your request, excuse me, every five years you're required to collect petition signatures regardless of the request amount has increased or not. That's extremely helpful for planning when you're dealing with such a large volume of town requests. I'm one person. I have now a second opinion that looks like this, but planning and trying to do an agency-wide or trying to, right, I have geographic needs, it's different from other organizations, but it's a lot of work, and it's not easy to collect that volume of signatures going door to door. I don't feel safe doing it. And that's not, by any town, I'm a single person. People react differently these days to having their doors knocked on or people driving up the driveway. We've seen some stories across the news throughout the years. Our first line of defense is to email, or excuse me, to mail letters, request to all of our donors for that specific town. The response rate is really low. And so those are people saying, hey, I believe in you, I support you, I'm going to donate to you, and even they're not sending it back. So then it's up to us to go boots on the ground. Point being, whatever you guys do decide, please don't change it year to year. Please stick with it, or please don't make changes, you know, two, three months in advance. That's a huge hurdle. It really is hard. So I'm happy to abide by any policy, but something that we can plan on is the most helpful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I would like to add to both of yours. Good stuff, really, and accurate. I'm the new kid on the block. I've been with ARC for two and a half years, and the first year I had to go out and petition. Who knew? The second year I had to go out and petition. Who knew twice? I was the only person there, so taking that time out meant my weekends and so on. And I'm happy to do that, as you say, in those five years, the turnaround time. So I did Brandon and Pittsburgh last year, the year before last year, and was fortunately successful, but I was at the Grand Union for two days, and I was thinking about the liquor store, but thought not.
It's a good one.
Well, no. And she rated that point. I've been to a number of towns, Clarendon and Wellington, wasn't Wellington, Clarendon and Mendon, and their town, they don't want you at their town dumps anymore, because there's a policy out there where they believe that petitioning is a political punch of some sort, which I don't think that it is. It's every person's right to vote. One of the things I have to say about having appropriations separately apart for including agencies like ours into a budget, is that it gives people that right to vote, yea or nay. You can look up and find out whether you want to support that agency or not, but it's that freedom that we have to vote for a cause that you feel is important, or an agency that you have been served by. And I fully support all of the agencies when it comes to appropriations, because I sit in that same bank, and we only have 19 towns. But if they all went to this petition every year, we probably would have to close. And we would have to close because we don't have personnel. There's myself and a part-timer. I can't leave the office if someone's not there. And I can't be out all the time raising funds or getting petition work done to get certain funds available to us. We're desperate for the funds. And I think we give back as much, if not more, than what we get. And I don't mean that in a derogatory way at all. It's just the nature of the beast, as it were. So thank you, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with everyone here.
Thank you.
I would add that, in addition to, when you made that decision not to get signatures every year, there was a, but only if you can make sure that you submit a budget in all the ways in which your organization supports the citizens of Fairhaven, which I think that's a task, but it's one we're easily, we're, we're prepared to do, and we really want to get out there to the community just exactly what we're doing in your community, and it takes a lot of time to get those signatures every year, especially when, you know, you're asking volunteers. Some of these folks, you know, are getting paid. We volunteer, right? It's volunteer basis, so, and, and, you know, volunteers are fewer and fewer. We're aging out, so.
Thank you. Okay?
Hi, I'm Carrie Wilka, I'm from Slate Valley Cares. First of all, our board president couldn't be here tonight, but we all decided we wanted to say thank you to the Fairhaven Town for, and voters for having confidence in us and passing us, so thank you for that. But going forward, we are a very small board, and we are run by all volunteers right now. We have no paid staff at this moment. We are talking about hiring one person for eight hours a week just to do some coordination, but we had to consolidate our time, and we've also moved past now just the town of Fairhaven because we are considered a right to food center, so we service more towns. This year, we went and put in, we got the signatures to be put on Castleton's ballot, and we realized how incredibly hard that was when you have a base of maybe 15 volunteers that most, all of are over 60 years old, standing out in front of shaws in 20-degree weather, you know, however many weekends it takes to do it. And our intent is to add two more towns next year as well. We do understand the board's position and the taxpayers' position about, you know, being transparent and wanting those signatures, so we have no problem going back to that if that's what you decide, but it is really hard, especially like the other agencies said, when you're doing multiple towns, because you're servicing multiple areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Green with the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging. First, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to, you know, to voice our opinions here. And I'm going to echo what everyone said. It is very difficult to get signatures. I have some staff spending, you know, close to 65 hours in a period of time, in a short period of time gathering signatures, and that's just one staff member. And we do 31 towns. You know, as, as I think VNA said, we provide over $200,000 in resources to this community, and all that we ask for is 1,800 in return. So it is, it is a heavy lift to go door to door. And, you know, again, the safety issue. A lot of our volunteers are over 60, some of my staff are over 60, and it is challenging.
And I can speak, my name is Joy Mortalidi, I'm the Development and Communications Coordinator with the Council on Aging, and I can speak to that safety piece of it a little bit because much like VNA stated, I'm a department of one, and my department is in charge of town funding. So that's 31 towns that we are working with throughout, really, it's a year-long process that I manage with the help of some staff who, their job titles and duties don't necessarily subscribe to supporting my department, but they do anyway, and those hours are sent that way towards us. I grew up in the Philadelphia area, and I don't knock on doors. I learned that very young, even up here. And I went to Green Mountain College, and, you know, it's, it has become a very, very different world. In this case of collecting signatures, our organization has experienced the same issues with going to dump, you know, the town dumps and that sort of thing. These signatures collections over the course that I have seen it has become, for whatever reason, a difficult, a difficult task to obtain. What I do find easy is to communicate with each individual town via the yearly reports and our impact reports, and all of that is available and accessible on our website, and we do direct mailings and that sort of stuff. So educating the towns on the services that we can provide is an easy, in my opinion, an easier little bit of a lift, and happy to do that. Again, my only request would be, you know, just like others have stated here, some pre-planning if things change, that, that makes it a slightly easier thing.
I would say too, that this is a good opportunity for the towns to look at the H Strong Plan and the collaboration between social service agencies, private enterprises, and the towns themselves and local government, and how we collaborate together to make our communities stronger. And if you have in view, I do have copies, or you can certainly go on, on the website and look at it.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Nichols. I'm the Executive Director of the Child First Advocacy Center for a nonprofit. It is myself and another employee that do town funding. I remember this year, I stood out in about, how, 29-degree weather for about eight hours at Puntley Dump to get signatures, and by the time we were done, I don't think we could feel our feet or hands. So to not have to have signatures would be great. I do know that for other towns that do have, that do require signatures, going to basketball games if you're allowed to is huge, just kind of a plug in there. That's also what I had done was sit at basketball games and get everybody that was coming in. I don't know if you know what our agency or nonprofit does. We, we do forensic interviews. We're a special victims unit for Rutland County for children and adults that experience severe neglect and abuse and sexual abuse. So we are an agency that, kind of an umbrella with DCF and law enforcement, but the Child First Advocacy itself is just two employees that we, that we house.
Thank you.
I think one other thing, I was at the school board meeting that they had last night as well, and I could be very off on the number, you would obviously know better than me. They, they said that there was like 7,000 registered voters in Fairhaven.
Yeah.
What was, what was the number?
There's two, there's 2,700. Yeah, I think when they gave the 7,000 number, they were talking Castleton, Fairhaven, Benson.
Okay, so even if you, like, did that as a comparative, if you look at how many registered voters you actually have compared to how many people actually voted, think about that when you're, you're the person that has to go and find all of those people, or those few people that are going out. I mean, like, one example would be, there's a lot of, your teachers that live in this town. So I work for the school district, and I know those teachers do not go grocery shopping at shaws because they don't want to see their parents and students. And I know that sounds horrible, but if you're out with your kids doing your personal grocery shopping, like, I get it. You know what I mean? So you're already missing a whole bunch of people by, by not, by having to look for signatures, because they're going to go do their business someplace where they can have their own peace of mind. But not all of them are also going out for themselves. There's a lot of those homebound people that are getting other people to do it for them, even though they are the registered voters whose signatures they're seeking. And that probably didn't come out the most eloquent way, but.
I understand what you're saying, thank you. There was someone else who wanted to comment?
I was just going to reiterate the, what sounds like a very simple task might sound like, this can't be possible, can't be this difficult. It is. And I don't know if Leeway or Banworth have to alter the charter or rule, whatever the proper jargon is here. Maybe it's three percent of the vote, maybe it's two percent of the voters, I don't know what, if that's an option, but, you know, you have, I think there's an opportunity here to kind of.
It's currently one percent.
I thought it was five percent.
It's five percent.
Yeah.
By statute.
So I know it's state statute, but what opportunity is to reimagine how we as social service agencies engage and educate the community for these types of votes and for these types of requests? You know, maybe there's something new to, to, to invent here.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chris Adams, Community Care Network, which is Rutland Hall Services and all community programs. Our general position, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to speak and for your past support, that's really appreciated. Our, our kind of a general thought position on the issues, what we'd like to see, obviously, request increase, you need petitions, but also if your, if your appropriation fails, if the voters don't pass it in a given year, then the following year you'd have to do some legwork to, to get back on the ballot. That's kind of what, what we would like to see, so I just thought I'd throw that out there. I know the, the funds that we've received in the past, a big, a good chunk of those, those monies go to, to support our emergency services, our crisis unit, you know, which is, which is critical support. I know there's a lot of Fairhaven residents that access all of our different programs and services, but that's a, that's a big one these days, so just thought I'd share that. But like I said, if appropriation fails in a given year, we'd like to see that be kind of a requirement to, you know, file petition with signatures to get back on the, on the ballot.
Good, thank you. Yes, Jim?
I don't know this young woman over here, but I just heard her speech, and I find it a little bit appalling and a little bit disrespectful when she says if you're a teacher here and you're on the roof, it don't count in town. Well, let me tell you something, maybe these teachers ought to consider who helps pay their salary, number one, and number two, I had had two businesses in town for thirty-eight, between here and Pulte for thirty-eight years, and I always welcomed the opportunity to speak with the clients that I serve on a personal basis other than making funeral arrangements. I think that's a little bit disrespectful. It's all I'm on to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had just had a second comment. I guess others have kind of alluded to it is, of that total, of your total population, you guys know the exact amount of registered voters? Because that's a, that makes it that much harder.
If you don't hold me on it, because I think the number, even though I said we have two thousand seven hundred people, I thought the registered voter was some nine, nine hundred, and of that, how many use, and, and don't, don't hold me on the numbers, but I think we're close. And of the number that, of that, of those registered voters, how many actually vote? Probably, um, five to six hundred, maybe? I mean, if that's what you're alluding to.
Yeah, I could be, I could be wrong, I guess the question, the point is, I could be completely wrong, is I believe the language on the petition is that if somebody to be eligible as a signee has to be a registered voter, is that correct?
That is.
So you just cut your, you know, your odds down from twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred to nine hundred. So, I mean, I've done this work in the past, myself going door to door and standing in stores, et cetera, and you might have a ton of signatures on your, on your sheets, but only a third of our own. Right, so it makes it that much harder.
I heard someone about the suggestion that, of where, where it goes in the end, that basketball courts or sporting events are good places. I don't know, I thought the way you make sure you have a registered voter is go at election day and stand off on the side, and as the people come, I know one, if they sign, they're a registered voter because they just voted, but.
That's if you have your policy set, and you haven't changed it, which has happened as recently as some towns, December, November.
That they don't let you there now?
Yes, they have, I started making calls in June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments that we should consider?
Other than a big thank you.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity, I just so appreciate it.
Really, and that's true.
Very cool, we do appreciate it.
That's what you guys.
We have not had, I don't know about anyone else, but I haven't had that, this opportunity before, and it really does come from the heart.
And, and we want, we want to thank you for all the good work, you do great work. I don't want you to think because we're looking at the policy and a policy change, that we don't appreciate the services, the important services that you give, we, we do. And give us quite a bit to think about, thank you.
When will you make the decision?
I would like to think sooner, it's gonna sound like I'm dancing around it, but bear with me. When I, when I have two members of the board not here, and I'd like it to be a board decision, and we'll, we'll share with the two that aren't here what, what we heard here tonight, I'd, I'd like to think we could have the decision, we, within the next couple of meetings. I mean, I mean, there was just one other piece in that was hearing from you, and so we'd understand what this meant in these changing times, yeah.
This means a lot to me also, I see you folks here connecting a face to the, to the monies, and that, that means a lot sometimes, and I think it, it means a lot to the taxpayers also.
Yes.
From the Council on Aging's perspective, we would love the opportunity to come here to the Select Board and tell you what our services are and the people, the numbers that we're, we're doing, you know, in the community.
That would be.
We would welcome that.
That would be great, I think it would be great for the whole town to hear that, I really do.
Sam? Anything you want to add, Sam?
Yeah, I guess I would just add that I think the reason this discussion is being had at all is that the board believes there's an interest in having all of the, the representatives of your organizations come and, and demonstrate in some fashion to the community what it is that you all do, and perhaps petitions are the way that it will be determined that can best be done. But for me personally, hearing from you directly does feel like the most meaningful thing, so I appreciate that you all took the time out of your evening to, to come here and do this tonight, it means a lot.
Well, there's an opportunity for a fair, I think. Well, I'm organizing one in Rutland for all of our agencies to connect with each other so that we're not sitting in silos anymore. But the same concept could be had for any town. We all get together, sit around tables, invite the public in, and give our spiel's. And people can then make an informed decision.
I, I like that idea. I would, and I know that the opportunity typically with most towns is that there's the annual meeting, the night before, or within some range of that, some towns have it the week before, but again, when you are an organization that has, is requesting from more than one town or even like two, I'm not, I'm getting to, it can not be everywhere at once, so if there was, again, the timing factor and that, I think all these things happen at the same time, whether it's petitions and then also the opportunity to speak to the citizens, something that is a little bit off of that timeline that other towns like would be advantageous and I think a lovely opportunity.
Maybe we can ask Bill to do, what is that, National Night Out, the first Tuesday?
First Tuesday of August.
The first Tuesday of August, and that's the last time, and that was pre-COVID, when we had all the social service agencies that serve our community there to, to share the work that they do. Again, you know, this particular town has informational meeting the night before, and it's always nice if there is a representative, it doesn't always have to be the executive director, any, any client, any person who, you know, I mean, this year they asked who you guys were, and he told us. So that was not.
The chief gave us a very good explanation of what you did, and glowing review.
Well, I'm very new, I'm, I'm the new executive director, there's, there was one at, at Seaback for fifteen years, so I took her place and I had big shoes to fill, so.
But a lot of people read the town report, so I, it's, I think it's really important that everybody sends in those.
That's a great way, because the town report is, if, when you're giving us the letter saying, this is what we did with the, with the monies you donated, that mean, it does mean a lot for understanding, but. Going to try to, I, I wrap this portion up here, moving on, I want to thank you again for, for coming, you're, you're more than welcome to stay as long as you want, but if you're, if you're into stuff like that, but, but thank you for coming in, I really appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Okay, the next item I have on the agenda is the, was the Planning Commission zoning discussion. The Planning Commission isn't ready for that discussion yet, so we're gonna push them out to the next meeting. Amendments to the agenda.
None for me tonight, sir.
None for me either?
There are no amendments to the agenda. Can I get approval of the minutes from April first?
I would motion to approve the meetings from April first, or the minutes from the meeting from April.
I'll second that.
Any additions, deletions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Department head reports. Chief, you know?
So, in the last two weeks, we had four arrests, the production of marijuana, which is a minor juvenile felony, so it turns out actually being. Tempting mood, that goes into operation, a law enforcement, and we had a DUI, a crash, a police ticket. We were ninety-four traffic tickets, thirty-two red warnings, one parking violation, we had two crashes, three overweight cars, fourteen sets of civilian fingerprints. We spent a lot of time on coke, we do traffic. Not a lot of major calls in the last weeks, where we had two hundred and nine calls for service in the last two weeks, and we had fourteen third setting. All I got is just any questions, nothing of major interest.
Good.
Thank you.
You want to add?
I have a question for the chief. What is an unsafe start of a motor vehicle? Is that a violation in some way?
Guy backed out of a location on Livery Street, but didn't drive and matted and left those two big black marks on the road, we had video, I don't know if I'm a business owner, we located him, he admitted it, we were on the streets.
Okay.
I've never seen one of them.
The law over here is called starting parked cars, in other states it's called unsafe cars.
Good, any other questions for the chief? Thank you.
Yeah, Glenn, I do.
Okay.
Phil, listen, there's a, I can't identify him, but there's a white pick, I know there's a lot of white pickups, but this guy's got tires this white on all four wheels, comes down from school, he goes up our street, headed from the corner of mechanic, up to about sixty miles an hour by the time he hits my thing. I'd appreciate it if you guys might do a little bit of spotting.
Did it, did it yesterday? You did it, did it yesterday?
He does it every day.
Is it?
A single cab?
I'm struggling in my mind trying to identify the truck, is it like recently in the last two weeks, the same truck?
Oh, no. This, this guy makes it frequently.
The Ford F-250 or 350 white extended cab?
Yeah.
Jack, I'll, I'll see if this will recently, if it's a student, I'll have her address it.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Department head reports, Joe, you doing the DPW and then?
Uh, I'll do, yeah, I'll do everything.
You want to do both?
All at once? Yeah. Uh, just for everybody left, but for everybody else's sake, so every year we do the coin drop raffle, I guess we'll call it. Tomorrow is the deadline to put your name in for coin drops, so April sixteenth, just keep that on the calendar. Green Up in Fairhaven Blooms is May third this year, which is a Saturday. We're gonna get out, clean up, clean up Fairhaven, plant some, put some pots out with some flowers, just kind of spruce the place up a little bit. For the board, May thirteenth is the first day you'll see the water and sewer budget. I do have those budgets with me, and I'm reviewing them now, so that process is moving forward. Recreation Committee bought a, what I'm gonna call the snack shack for the playground. They bought a, I think they called it a little Amish shed, it's on skids, so it's not a, it's not a permanent fixture, so we can actually place that down near the restroom, so we'll be doing some sales and some fundraising for Fairhaven Rec.
I saw that today, it's cute.
Yeah.
It'll work.
Hydro flushing started today, just as a heads up. I reached out to the forester, so when I got here, a little more than seven years ago, the, the board had taken some timber off the property up north. I reached out to him again to see if there was anything else that needs to be, to be cleared out, we were supposed to do that every couple of years, so we'll see where that goes. I wanted to, to say how proud we are of our fire department, you know, they don't come up a ton, but when they do, they're always doing the good work. They helped Hubbardton and Castleton, I think it was last week, with two large fires. You know, we talk about being regional, this and regional that, really at this point, our fire departments are regional fire departments. We couldn't do anything without Castleton and Cast, and we helped Castleton, so, and all departments, so thank you for them.
Who was saved, talking about?
Our fire department helped Castleton.
Our, okay.
And Hubbardton. You saw the, from the damage that took place over the winter where somebody came through and knocked down the signs and the light pole, the signage went back up, the light pole is in May sixteenth, so sometime in that time period we'll get the pole back up, that's all covered by insurance. Our part-time cemetery crew started yesterday, Monday, so they're out there cleaning the cemetery. The gates will be open on April twenty-first. We wanted to get the guys out there and give them an opportunity to pick up the cemetery before we let people back in. And Carrie from Wastewater wanted to express her appreciation for the board letting us map, GPS map the water and sewer lines. She used that again just recently to help with one of her projects, and she says it has been just a remarkable time saver and help, so thank you guys for spending the money on that. And that, gentlemen, is all I have for you.
Questions for Joe on your DPW or town manager's report?
I do have one thing, actually a couple of them. I know there's been some issues with the sewage on Forest Street from time to time, and I know she was investigating some of that, where's that gone, do you know, yeah?
Yep, so there is a collapsed line on Forest Street, this side, our side of the main street, like heading towards Stewart's over here, it's a collapsed line, we're getting it camered, and we're going to try to get, get that, that pipe lined instead of digging it up and putting new pieces in. She's reached out to somebody already to get it camered. That and our main collection point right here in the middle of Washington and West and North Park.
Lined with PVC, Joe?
I'm sure something like that, yeah, something they can jam down in the hole.
And then also at the water plant there, they were talking about doing some infrastructure work. Is that, have they done anything about that yet as far as getting some figures and whatnot?
Yep, Mike Scott, I think he has at least one quote. So what we have up at the water plant, we have these big skids that come through and kind of clean the, the filter sand, I don't know how, but periodically. And that sand and those alcohol cleaners are, they're the original ones for that plant. So at this point, I know the, the filter material is getting old and starting to wear down, so Mike's getting quotes to replace the, the filtering parts.
Because I, because I think there's some updated equipment that could, we replace it more efficiently, efficiently, so we, we need to, we need to pursue that.
Yep.
Any other questions for the town manager?
That's all I have.
Moving on to old business, on the agenda it said reappraisal bids, approving a contractor, my understanding is we're not, we still have not ready on that, we're gonna push that one out?
Yeah, give me one more week, gentlemen, I would appreciate it.
Okay, to next. Okay. Nine B, Hillary Solomon from the Stormwater Project, he's been, she wasn't able to make it, so we're gonna push that one out as well?
Yep, she was waiting on some feedback for one of her documents, and that wasn't ready yet.
C, gazebo at Memorial Park discussion. Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, I'm against that gazebo or any other permanent structure there that doesn't have to do with memorial ground itself, like another stone for the Gulf War, et cetera. That's not the place for a gazebo, way too large, et cetera, et cetera, and that ground should be left for what it's supposed to be there for, the memorial, that's it.
Exactly.
Yeah, Glenn, speaking, uh, kinda echo into what he said, uh, I'd like to just give my own personal opinion, that's somewhat sacred ground. That was set up as a memorial to deceased veterans and veterans in the future. If you wanna put a gazebo, or anybody wants to denote, donate a gazebo to this town, there's a lot of room in the north end of the park, on the opposite end, somewhere, anywhere, but it doesn't belong in that area. It is a disgrace to the veterans of there. It's not a gathering place, it's a place to go pay your respects and sit solemnly. I, I'm just totally against it, I think it's disrespectful, and I guarantee you, if General Edward Delu, Brigadier General Edward Delu, ever come back, your ass would be grass, and he'd, he'd be the lawnmower. That's not why that park was established here.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
Any other comments on the gazebo in the memorial park?
Don't do it.
I agree, don't do it.
I just wanna echo again my concern with it would draw people to hang out on a gazebo off that area.
And I agree with the chief.
I don't think that's the best, I like the idea, I like the thought in this, I just don't know if that's gonna be the best placement for that.
Thank you, Phil.
I agree on that as well, I second that.
I don't agree with the chief much, but that's one thing I agree with him on, and the riffraff that will be hanging around that place will detract from what that really truly means, and that is a disgrace to our freedoms and the service members that have sacrificed their lives.
Okay, thank you.
I understand that the town wants to do something cool, I respect that, but removable van stands seems to be the best way to go.
The intent...
Updating them would probably end the town's best interest, but I can't speak for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
I would say that the intent is good and the donation is appreciated, uh, but perhaps we could look into, we the town, we the people, could look into other ways to do so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
And it's not to detract, and it's not to detract from the Legion's efforts to beautify the place, to make it more suitable for anything, it's not against the Legion, it's just with what we got going through for Haven, cause we are a, a town that is caught in a local drug trafficking area.
Okay, thank you.
It's probably not the best to have a gazebo placed.
Thank you. Any comment from the board members?
None.
Joe, anything you wanna?
Uh, I, I would need to, uh, agree with, with what I've heard out in the public that this, I, I've not weighed in yet, um, but I will now, that I do not recommend installing that gazebo. Uh, there are a lot of other options that we can, that we can do to improve the, the parade, um, and I don't think this is a well-received project, it's, I'm not getting very positive reviews from the folks I speak to.
Thank you. We're missing a couple board members, uh, do we wait till next meeting to make a decision with a full slate, or do we make, what's your pleasure?
My sense is that even Chad and, and Mike are kind of in the same, of the same mind about this issue, but I don't wanna speak for them, I prefer not to, um, all things being equal.
Yeah, I don't wanna speak for me either, but, uh, you know, if the, if the folks out in the public don't wanna, and we've heard plain and simple they don't wanna, then I guess we don't do it. I mean, that's my opinion, but I'm not gonna speak for Chad or Mike.
Like, if we, you guys can say no now and revisit it in a year, you know? You tell the Legion that at this current time, no, and you can bring it back up in a year.
I, I would hate for them to take it as an offense, um, that's my only concern, uh, cause I don't think it's meant in that way, I think we're just addressing the reasonable concerns that everyone has shared.
Yes.
As far as your statement, are you speaking of the Legion taking it as an offense?
That, yeah, declining their offer might be...
All right, well, here's my perspective on that.
Yeah.
The American Legion is designed to, to provide community support, benefits the town that they serve in respect to the veterans. If they're offended by that, they're missing the hope. And secondly, I will say this, there are a lot of other options. If they have money they wanna donate to the town, it's my, and this is just rumor, cause I have nothing to back myself up here, but it's my understanding that the old staging net was there for the public speakers during Memorial Day has gone to heaven. Let them, let them spend their money on that. Here's my principle on that, that you do yourself a favor instead of spending 6,000 bucks, you spend 3, and you're knitting the eye of the public, and you're providing something to the town. There is other options.
Agreed.
I think you need to rethink it, as the American Legion.
Sir, you're speaking from a sentence, this board doesn't understand it.
I'm not getting into that.
Fair enough, sir.
That's it.
Fair enough, sir.
Jonathan, making comments like that, it's not appropriate. If you continue like that, you may be asked to leave, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Then you probably won't get the answer.
So, so, what I'm hearing, I'm not really, I don't think I need a motion, what I'm hearing is the consensus of the board is that we're gonna thank the American Legion for the offer, but no thank you, and not put the gazebo in, is that what I'm hearing?
For the gazebo specifically, yes.
For the gazebo specifically?
Yeah.
Can the minutes reflect that? The consensus is no, uh, thank you, but no thanks, we... There's...
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to new business.
I'm on it here.
Have a good night, gentlemen, thanks for coming in.
Thank you both, sir.
Community bulletin board approval.
So the, the, what used to be called the Economic Development Committee, um, would like to install a community bulletin board downtown Fairhaven next to the, uh, bus stop. Uh, the community bulletin board will be a two-sided, two-sided board, one side will be a, a map of downtown Fairhaven with a, with a list of all the businesses, kinda like what you see in Rutland, um, and on the other side we'll have a place for postings that, uh, I know we can post there, and then some of our local organizations, like the churches, wanted to post there as well, just to help get the word out of what they're doing in there for their organizations. Uh, today we're asking the board to approve the installation of the board, this board to approve the installation of a community bulletin board, again by the, by the bus stop.
You, you got in your packets the picture and, and of, you know, right by the bus stop of where, I know it's a, if we, we don't have a, any of that, but it's a, it's, as you're going south, just where, right where the crosswalk is, and the two crosswalks come together, we thought that was where most of the people park and ride and crossing would be around the bulletin board?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Joe?
Can I ask how much is the cost to taxpayers?
Jeez. Not, the price of the bulletin board was, I think what we spent on it is less than, less than a thousand dollars, I don't, I don't know, I, I...
I mean, like, total encompassing project.
It's, it's, we had, the bulletin board is going to go up, we, Rutland Regional Planning, uh, with the "You Are Here" sign that's gonna be on one side of it, was donated?
Up on South Side, right? I think that's where it was supposed to be as last directed, was supposed to be up on South Side?
Nope.
Per, uh, meeting?
No.
No, 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 I think it was directed towards up on South Side as of the last meeting.
I, I'm telling you that what we're looking at is down by the bus stop, where the, where the sidewalks are, there'll be, uh, and, and it was a minimal cost, we had a lot of donated time from Rutland Regional Planning on, on doing some work on the "You Are Here" sign, it's, and I'm pretty sure our DPW people will be putting the sign in. Are you looking for a motion or just consensus?
Uh, I would, I would take a motion, so that way it's official.
Oh, entertain a motion.
Um, I would, uh, put forth a motion to install the bulletin board in the location specified on this map. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, community bulletin board's taken care of. We have next on the list 10B Downtown Designation Resolution.
Yeah, so the, the board approved the planning commission to move forward with their downtown designation, uh, this was maybe six months ago. Uh, the state came back and said, "That's nice, but we would much prefer you to, uh, use our template resolution." So if the board would, uh, so, make a motion and approve the resolution, and then sign. And it's a resolution to adopt the downtown designation plan.
Right, that we've already moved for, moved forward.
Yeah, we're, we're doing it right now.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Town of Fairhaven Downtown Designation Resolution. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, and we do so.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. While we're getting those signatures, item C is the Camaro land donation. Give us a brief update of what that, what that is?
So this was, I've never had this happen, but, um, the state, the state sent an email saying a Mr. Walter Camaro is donating a 17, uh, Mr. Walter Camaro passed away, um, and in his will, he's donating a 17-acre parcel of land, uh, to the state to be added to the, I, I'm gonna butcher this, Bonswano Wildlife Management Area. This is off of Scotch Hill, north of the highway. Um, the state is just looking for, um, the co, the community support to support Mr. Camaro's donation. And I have something for the chair to sign if the board approves.
Again, it's an eye test for folks with, uh, of, of the map that came out on it, it's, if, think Green Mountain Conservation Camp, and then they, they say go straight across, there's a section of land that the Camaro's owned that...
Can that be posted on Facebook?
I'm not posting it on Facebook, no.
No.
Can that be posted on the town page, webpage?
It's a private thing.
It's a private, we, we, we again can't say yes or no, right, they're just, we're just showing our, they've asked for our support, but they, they could do this without our support, quite frankly, but it's a good thing to support.
Thank you.
Do we have a, a motion to sign? Do I have the chair sign the letter of support?
I will motion to have the chair sign the letter of support.
I'm not gonna make you say Botswano or...
Botswano, WM.
Botswano?
Uh, Management Area, right.
Uh, I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we know what we're doing? I think so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item D, uh, we are looking to appoint Ann Finley to the planning commission. Uh, Ann is with us, uh, here.
Yep. So Ann sent an email, uh, thinking it would be a good time to volunteer for the planning commission. We just, uh, we need the board to approve that.
And that'll get us back up to a number, I think we're number five?
Full strength, yeah.
Uh, full strength, uh, we haven't been there in a while, uh...
I'll, I'll make a motion and we'll appoint Ann to the planning commission.
Seconded.
Any comments, discussion?
Is it a motion to appoint Ann Finley to the planning commission for the remainder of a three-year term set to expire March 2026?
Yes, what, what he said, yes.
Perfect, yeah, absolutely.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Ann, we're looking forward to having you working with our planning commission. Okay, uh, item E, Highway Financial Plan Review and Approval.
So this is the annual, this is, this no new information, this is your highway budget that was approved by the board already, um, this is just our reporting up to the state for this. So there's, there's two parts to this, the, the board approved the annual financial plan, as well as the certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards, which come side by side.
There's, uh, does someone want, I figured you could read off the top and make the motion?
Road and Bridge Standards.
Road and Bridge Standards?
We, the legislative body, the municipal of Fairhaven certify that we have received, understand, and, and comply with the town road and bridge standards.
Let me, let me see, you're gonna, you're gonna, well, I, I don't know, let me, let's, I'm sorry, let's, let's see what we have here.
Um, so it would be the board...
What's the first motion?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a proposal, um, perhaps a, um, motion to approve the annual financial plan.
I'll make a motion, we approve the financial plan.
I second the motion to approve the financial plan.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one to sign? Then the second one, what would the motion be?
Um, it could be a motion, um, to approve the certificate of compliance for the town road and bridge standards.
I will make a motion to approve the, was the road and bridge standards?
Certificate.
Certificate of road and bridge standards.
I'll second that.
Certificate of road and bridge, or, we have a motion, we have it seconded, any questions, comments? We're good, Sam?
Oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And you want that to be today's date?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth? Moving right along, while we're getting those signatures, on 10F HVAC Contract Approval, that's that MERP grant for the heat pumps for the, uh, upstairs, downstairs, and Police Department?
Yep, the whole building.
You wanna, can you, there's a little bit involved there, Joe, do you want to just give us a little explanation of what that is?
Sure. So the, uh, the MERP program is the Municipal Energy Resiliency Program, um, these, these are funds that the state gave us to improve our, um, energy efficiency. Um, this grant is providing us with funds, they gave us 386,000 in, in funds that required no grant match, so it's just straight, a straight donation to the town. Um, it's meant to install heat pumps, which are energy efficient, that will replace the porch on the back of the building in front of the Police Department to make that ADA compliant, which is part of this program. It will also add insulation to the attic, and then help seal up some of the cracks in the building, cause it's, our envelope really is, we're kinda porous. Um, so yeah, that's what this grant is. Uh, we did put this up to bid, uh, we did get bids for the HVAC, did what we're talking about tonight, the, um, heating and cooling units, as well as the insulation. We didn't get any bids for the construction portion with the porch and then kinda sealing the envelope and repairing the, the ceiling upstairs, so we'll still be looking for people to do that. Um, for this, this contract we're talking about tonight, the total cost is 282,625 dollars. This project will get us 16 head units, it'll heat and air condition- It'll heat and air condition the entire building with the exception of the hallways, and it will add nine condensers to the exterior of the building. It's a lot of construction for a little bit of money. We got a good deal on this.
Does someone wanna make the motion?
Go try it.
No, you got it right.
Okay. Okay, we make a motion to approve a quote from Craig Billings in the amount of 282,625 dollars to install heat pumps in the municipal building offices.
I second that motion.
Sam seconds the motion. Any questions?
Just the one thing I think, cause I, I talked to these guys and I need Joe to confirm it, is the way they're designing them is not to interfere with the historical value of the building. They're all gonna be designed to not affect the outside or, it's gonna be, so when they mount, they're gonna be interior walls, not to affect the building. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Good, good information. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there something for us to sign?
Nope, I just needed the approval. I needed it in the minutes.
Perfect.
Um, Craig said if, with the board's approval, he can start May 1st.
Good. We'll see that going. Okay, moving down, we are now at two minutes for public comment. Yes, Lily?
With, uh, Lily and Deloitte Fairhaven resident, um, where I have two minutes, only two minutes, I'd love for you to have that time to hear this out, and if someone would be kind enough to give one to Mr. Vizian.
What are you handing out?
Um, this is relative to, uh, as pertinent to the agenda, the improvements to the town meeting, to the town, sorry, to the town building. Um, so it is an issue that's on the agenda, or relative to what's on the agenda. Um, this is going back to, I believe this should be, if they want to. Um, this is going back to the actual town meeting of March 4th, uh, at 26 minutes, when Mr. Gunter and Mr., um, Max Standard, and I will, we were talking about the $18,000 fine. I corrected, which was true, it was originally, um, an 18,000 some odd fine, and it was eventually reduced to 8375, 8,375 dollars. But the point that I'd specifically like to bring out is a misstatement of Mr. Gunter. Because at the meeting, Mr. Gunter said it wasn't the town's fault, and he said it was the architect, and I believe the contractor. He said the town bought it, and that's why the fine was shared. However, um, black and white, this is from Volsha, where the fine was actually initiated. If you actually go to, I believe it's page four, um, it specifically states that the controlling employer was responsible and failed to do an inspection on the first floor when the elevator went in. Um, that, in fact, on the page, the signature page, the definition of the employer agrees to correct. The employer was Mr. Gunter, who signed it. So the employ, the controlling and correcting employer, in fact, was the town. The town controlling, town manager, Mr. Gunter, by his signature, black and white. This is not a personality contest, okay, or difference. Uh, Mr. Gunter knew because Clay Associates in 2019 did come through with lab reports of the basement and upstairs that had it.
Excuse me, your time is, is just about up, so if we could wrap it up?
So what I'm saying is that when Mr. Gunter, the controlling and correcting employer, knew of basement and top floor, he failed per Volsha to get the, um, I'm sorry, the lab reports prior to construction. So I'd like to correct about 46 minutes of that, when Mr. Gunter said the town did nothing wrong. Black and white from the state.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, my bad.
John?
Hello, my name is John Villas. I'm not sure if you remember me or not, or what I said last time. But the last time I was here, I said I was willing to make a settlement agreement with the town prior to even going to mediation, which is going to cost you a buttload of money because your police department violated my First Amendment rights, which means your insurance policy doesn't cover that. So the taxpayers are gonna be paying out of pocket for all the expenses.
We don't need, we don't want any documentation from you. Don't need it. Sit down.
Are you sure?
I'm.
This is a settlement agreement.
Nope. I don't, I don't wanna see your, your paper.
Mr. Greg TV, can you zoom on that?
John?
I don't know if you can or can't.
Jonathan, sit down. Your time is up.
I haven't even begun to spoke, sir.
You're not gonna waste any more of this board's time doing the foolishness you're doing. If you don't say, if you don't, if you don't sit down and be quiet, I'm gonna ask the chief to remove you from the room. Now, sit down.
Please do so.
Sit down.
Please do so.
Let's take, go for a 10-minute recess.
No, 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 we're not.
Peg TV, I want a 10-minute recess while we, while we remove.
Please arrest me.
While we remove.
If you're gonna have your police arrest me.
While we remove Mr. Villas.
Please do so, don't chicken out. I'm handing, I'm handing you a settlement offer.
I'm asking you to leave.
I'm asking you and trying to hand you a settlement offer, asking for the four checks.
Jonathan, Jonathan, like you, when you approached me over there, you need to send that to the attorney, and the attorney can handle that.
Do you not understand what freedom of speech is? Do you not understand who the legal argument or the legal body of this town is?
And they're represented for, if you wanna put an agreement, then that should go to the lawyers, not here. That's why I said.
Are you gonna arrest me?
No.
Just.
Then why are you speaking?
We're just done.
You, you've been asked to leave so we can do the business for the town?
Why am I being asked to leave?
Because you're wasting the town's time.
How? I'm presenting a settlement offer.
Jonathan, Jonathan.
I am presenting a settlement offer, Mr. Lucci. You work in the real estate.
You will address the chair of the board. We're, we're, we're in, we're, we're in.
Take another five minutes.
We're taking a recess. If someone wants to take a break, they can. We're gonna, we're gonna come out of the brief recess and move on. The next item, uh, let's finish, we didn't wrap up, the two minutes for public comment. I'm down to one public here. Nathan, do you have a, if you have a comment?
Nathan Agan, uh, I was just sitting here to begin the meeting, and I wasn't gonna say nothing, but, uh, we're on the fire hydrant flushing, but yeah, I know there's some storm drains that are plugged up. So I know the, you know, we're flushing the hydrants and the water gotta go somewhere, so we're just plugging up the storm drains. I just think that maybe, you know, we should clean the sides of the roads and the top of the storm drains before we flush hydrants. Cause you're just making the situation worse in the long run. Uh, yeah, and, and also that, it's, uh, paint, painting season, and there's certain intersections on these side roads going into the main, that, you know, it could be really helpful to have a center line, yellow stripe, because a lot of people, you know, are in the middle of the stop signs, and you're trying, you have the right of way coming off a main road onto this, and these people are parked in the middle of the intersection, because if they had a little six-foot yellow stripe at the stop signs, dividing each half of the thing, it, it may help that people stay on their own side. And that's it.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to parking lot. Is there anything in the parking lot that the board would like to do?
I don't have anything tonight.
No?
Nothing for me.
We're going to go to roundtable. Sam, anything for the roundtable?
Nah, I don't think this week, Glenn, but thanks for asking, Rich.
Rich?
Uh, the only thing I got is, uh, I know that the DPW crew's been out patching some holes, and they, it looks like they've done quite a lot of patching, from what I've seen. Looks good. Uh, I do think we need to concentrate more on our sides of our road with the catch basins. A lot of them are covered with debris yet, and the water cannot get to them. And that is a great point that we just heard, and, uh, I think we oughta try to see if we could concentrate on some more of that work.
I have nothing for the roundtable. So we're going to be, go right into reviewing the financial reports. Chad's not here. Do I, uh, could you make the motions for the payroll and?
Okay. I make a motion to pay the payroll of 36,732,37 cents.
Motion.
Second. I have a second?
Oh, seconded, yes.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to pay the warrant of 81,699,44 cents.
Motion seconded?
We know what we're doing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the checkbook status is 981,471,79 cents.
Motion seconded? No, sorry. Yes.
Yes, you, you don't have to, you, you're just, an information, but, good. Thank you. And, uh, there is no executive session?
No, sir, the, we, that was canceled.
That was canceled?
Yes.
So now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I will second the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.